I'm going to call the room, the City Council Council. It's accelerated, so I'll take a break right in. I wish you please our eyes for the pledge. Okay, Mr. Redd.
We now mean that the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor. Now from the local council agency, Assemblymember Taylor.
Yep.
Council agency, Assemblymember Warren.
Eric.
Council agency, Assemblymember Torres.
We also do.
May everyone have a nice year, first man.
Yes.
And may your chairman, Shocker.
Your president.
Do we have any recording? Okay. At this time, we have special presentations and awards. Tonight's going to be this great pleasure in a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Ms. Hilda Lawson for her service to the city as our Easter running for the past 25 years. She's going to be, everybody help me down there. So at this time, you four will join me down there as soon as I get that written. Hilda, we don't usually read this, but for you, it's special. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Hilda Lawson. The City Council of the City of Stanton is hereby officially commend Ms. Hilda Lawson for her exemplary dedication and commitment to the Stanton community. Ms. Lawson has given the Stanton community 25 years of memories. And serving as the official Stanton Easter running during our annual Easter econ. Ms. Lawson has consistently proven to be a valuable member of our community and is worthy of the accolades and recognition. It is fitting that we join in the celebration of her accomplishments and recognition. We offer our gratitude to her on her retirement from serving as Stanton Easter running. And extend to her our sincerest, a sincere appreciation for her invaluable contributions to not only the City of Stanton, but to our residents and our kids, my grandkids. Therefore, we wish you continued success and joy on any of your future endeavors. Signed by my hand this day of May 9th. David John Charrow, Mayor, on behalf of our City Council, our staff, and our charging community. Now, Hilda, come on up with your hat. So we got that's what I'm assuming, maybe I'll. Actually, Hilda's daughter is going to step up.
Well, maybe she's.
She's so concerned.
Yeah, because she has two kids, too, my great-grandkids. She has two little ones, old thing.
Yeah.
So, Hilda, my name is Benjamin. So on behalf of Senator Janet Webb, he would just like to thank Hilda on providing her as a mom for a little bit. I'm hoping that you can say that.
Boy, it's mom for this, okay.
Mom for there, we go, oh, perfect. We just wanted to thank you for your service. I mean, that's definitely been a fun experience, I'm sure, but on all ends, I'm sure that the thankful, we're just so happy that you were able to do that. Something, you also served as the mayor of Stanton as an employee for many, many years as well.
Eighteen years.
You're still with time, I mean, so congratulations on that as well. On behalf of Senator Webb, congratulations.
I'm not sure if somebody from the county wants to sit here.
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, this is from Supervisor Cheeby's office. And it also says, congratulations for 25 years of service here at the community as the Easter. And so on behalf of the county of Orange County.
Thank you so much.
I have to take the picture with all good ones.
One, two, three.
Can we have one more smile before we do, please?
Always do your money.
Hilda?
I thought I said.
There we go. There we go. How about that stance?
I think it's a Easter money.
One, two, three.
Don't you want the mayor shaking your hand?
Sure. What's that?
There we go.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, there we go, like this.
Somebody, always somebody.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Stanton. But I just, I just want to say, thank you, Stanton, and it was a beautiful year to spend with the kids and everybody was so beautiful.
So we expect you to come back as Hilda.
Yes, sir. Over my great-grandkids. Thank you so much.
Okay, our presentation is going to now be by the Orange County, the City of Vector Control District. They're going to share their mission with the City Council, providing information on current operations.
Good evening, council members. I think for the opportunity to be here, it's always a tough act to follow an Easter run. We have control for many, so I'm okay. So I wanted to provide you some information. I know it's been a couple of years since we've come to the Stanton City Council meetings to just provide your services, our programs, and what we're looking for. Oh, right, now you can hear me. And so what we're looking for in the future and what new technologies we're utilizing in our programming. So we are a independent special district. We cover all of Orange County, all 34 cities and unincorporated areas. We have the largest government board in Orange County, 35 board members. So and every city has their appointed board member, which is Councilmember Taylor in this case. We have a $17 million budget going into this year 2023-24, and a large portion of our budget is staffed because we have a member of our, our organization in every one of our cities every working day. So it's important to know when we're looking at our programs, not just mosquitoes, but we also control for rats, rat-infested fire ants, and filth flies. We do a, what's called an integrated vector management program. So we always try with education and source reduction as the first avenue to reduce those factors. And then we look into control methods, so whether that's a pesticide or a biological control, and then also conducting surveillance to see how well that control is working and if there's any diseases present in the community. So our services are large in scope. We have a comprehensive education program every year. We invite the cities to join our campaign in the summer to educate the residents about mosquitoes. It's getting pretty competitive with cities competing for the top vector control city. So we urge your staff and the US Councilmembers to join that cause. It also helps your residents to know what to do and how to be proactive in controlling for mosquitoes. Our lab is one of the few labs in the state is a full working lab, so they actually do disease testing at house as well, which allows us to get these results within one day in our mosquitoes and other rodents such as rats, birds, blossom. And then we have our comprehensive control program, which I stated was for mosquitoes, rat-infested fire ants, rats, and filth flies. That includes source reduction and includes biological controls, mosquito, fish, includes larva side and adult side when necessary. I'm really going to focus on the mosquito end of it as we're entering into mosquito season, because I could talk about this for hours, but I know you have other things you need to do as well. So with mosquitoes, what most residents see on their side is when they call us, we'll come out. But what we do proactively is there are lots of public access sources that no one really is aware of, and those are storm drains that are under our feet in most of the cities, manholes, gutters, unmaintained swimming pools, flood channels, that can all be a breeding source for mosquitoes. So those are ones that we regularly treat and also do comprehensive work in the wetlands and the coastal areas and in reservoir ponds. With the abundant rain that we have, we're also seeing sources that have been docked dry for drought years, for years being full of water. So we're looking at those as new possible sources for mosquitoes. Those are our large sources. We also do some moderate sources, which are cities, city drains, as well as lots of drains in shopping halls, loading docks, nurseries, city infrastructures like BMPs that were created for stormwater capture that may be retaining water from mosquitoes. And then cemeteries are a large source, too, because they have individual containers that can hold water. From a residential standpoint, a lot of that is education, because we try to get into every residential property. So it's identifying new sources and then educating our residents and empowering them to talk within their community as well, talk to their neighbors and their friends to spread that messaging. A lot of times, residents aren't even aware that mosquitoes breed in water. Nobody ever thinks of where the mosquito came from, just that it's there. And so when we tell them that, they can eliminate those sources in their property and reduce that habitat for mosquitoes. I really want to focus on two different types of mosquitoes, because these are the ones that are impacting the residents. So we have our Kellec mosquito, and it prefers large sources, the swimming pools, the flood channels. It bites certain deschegon and really prefers the birds. They last, they will breed from age to adult in about one week, and they live outdoors. The one that's really impacting our residents is the 80s mosquitoes. Now, I don't expect anybody to ID a mosquito, if you see it, just kill it. No question asked. But these mosquitoes, the 80s mosquitoes are the backyard sources. They're the little sources, the flower pot saucers, the yard drain, kids' toy blood dumps outside during the rain event. They prefer to bite mammals, which includes us as humans. They will follow us into homes, and they can actually live their whole life cycle in the house, too. So one of the messages we're going to get out on Mother's Days, and everybody's going to get their mom flowers, and those flowers are going to sit for about a week. And if you let them sit for another week, you may get another present, which is an 80s mosquito. So we always let people know, you know, change out the water, toss out the flowers if necessary, when they're no longer viable. So the challenge with the 80s mosquitoes is that their eggs are viable in dry conditions, so their eggs can last up to two to three years when there is no water present. And then they fill up with water, and then they can hatch out, and that's how they bred the, described our Orange County. Stanton does have confirmed 80s mosquitoes within my city, but they're, you're not unique in that all 34 cities have now have confirmed 80s mosquitoes. So the good news with 80s mosquitoes is they're currently not transmitting disease in Orange County. We don't have the diseases that they're, they can transplant here. What we do have, and what our Kellec mosquitoes can transmit is West Nile virus, and those are our Kellec mosquitoes. West Nile virus is endemic into the counties, so that means we see activity every year. Depending on the year, you can see 2014 and 15 were high years. We're actually leading the nation in West Nile virus activity. We looked at those years and really changed how we provided service in our proactive method in addressing disease cases. And you can see the following years have been slightly moderate to mild, is what we call them. So with heavy rain years, we really can't anticipate how much of the mosquito activity we're going to see. We're hoping for a really mild year, because it's flushed out a lot of our soil drains and stuff. So going into the 80s mosquitoes, we have the Kellec mosquitoes, again, they're really beautiful mosquitoes, nicely strike, just kill them. Don't need to know if they're boy or girl, just they all can get smashed. What I wanted to address and what I'd like to point out to everybody is that the eggs are so small that most people don't even know they're there. If you see on that flower pot saucer on the bottom picture, the little black dots that look like pencil markings are actually all individually laid eggs. And that mosquito, that one individual mosquito will lay eggs in multiple containers to make sure that their offspring have a survival rate. And those eggs between five to seven days to hatch out into adults, now that's in ideal conditions, nice warm weather. The great thing about Southern California is we have pretty moderate to mild weather every, all year. So our mosquitoes never completely die out, they do slow down their life cycle. So in winter, they can take up to two weeks to become adults. So what are these mosquitoes actually doing? Well, they're really changing our quality of life. Because they're breeding in backyards, they don't fly very far, but they can impact your neighbors, they can impact how you enjoy your backyard. They prefer to bite people, they bite multiple times in one sitting. So you may get three or four bites of people. I just talked to someone this morning, and they said they got 20 bites while sitting outside last weekend, and it could be from the same mosquito. They like to bite multiple times and get a little blood viciate, right? And they do have the potential to transmit disease, and that's where our concern is. They may not be doing it right now, but we have the capability, and we have the mosquitoes, and we have people traveling to areas that have those diseases now, the most COVID restrictions there live. So we're looking at new technologies to address this growing concern. And one of those technologies is sterile insect technique. Sterile insect technique by no means is a innovative, new technology that's being used in agricultural practice for years. There's a meth fly program that affects most of Southern California, and they've been releasing meth flies for 20-plus years. It is novel when you're coming, when you're addressing it to mosquitoes. And so our staff has been for the last year looking at how to implement it and how to make sure that we can basically broadcast this program into certain areas that are high risk to help address that disease risk. So the benefits are that we're reducing mosquitoes to fight mosquitoes. And we're not changing the mosquito's biology, we're just sterilizing them. And the X-rays, literally the same dosage you would get walking through an airport X-ray machine. It's just mosquitoes are a lot smaller, and it impacts that. We are only releasing the males, and so in that case, males do not bite, so although people may see more mosquitoes, they're not going to have increased biting pressure. So this is the whole process. You take an egg. We basically raise the egg until adults, we X-ray it, we confirm it's sterile, and then we release them to mate with the wild females. This is a very simplified process. Just the research on this process can take two to three years to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and that's what we've been doing. Our first project will be in the city of Mission Viejo, and it's going to be a very small area, it's about a quarter square mile, it's going to impact about 100 homes. And depending on the outcome of that project, we're going to look to our board to see how we want to move forward with this technology. So really looking at the advantages of SIT, we have to look at how we can be innovative in the traditional vector control methodology we've been using, that's going door to door, is really not going to be sufficient for these mosquitoes. We're looking at how we can address these pending disease issues and make sure that those diseases are not coming into our community and impacting our residents. And first and foremost, we're a public health agency, so we want to ensure that we're protecting the public health of our residents. And then geographically, we're looking to see what areas are most at risk because they have a circled high 80s mosquito counts or have high numbers of disease, travel-related diseases. So it's important to know that even though we're looking at this technology, the key to mosquito control is still a shared responsibility. And so as leaders within your community, we really need you to help get the messaging out, whether it's sharing our social media messaging, talking to your neighbors, making sure we're present in our outreach events, so we can educate your residents and taking part in our summer campaigns, so the residents know what they can do. Because that's the only way we're going to reduce mosquito populations as a community, is through all working together. And then our campaign is to help take action. If you don't follow us on social media, they've gotten into some really engaging social media posts. Currently, they're trying to find every song that has the word mosquito in it, so check that out on Mondays. But I'm available for any questions you may have.
Gary? No, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
This gives us great information, because my name is, my name is here on in.
Yeah, it's a, how do I issue now? So I'm happy to come out if you have any questions in the future. Gary has my, my email, my phone number, he can get ahold of me. Thank you so much.
Yes. I know that in our city, we at least have two big events where the committee comes out, such as a Halloween event and our Easter event. And do you guys, and we have booths available for organizations to promote their message to the public. How will we get you to come to, for example, host a booth at our events?
I don't know who are at your Easter event this year. I know we have in the past, and I believe we already do your Halloween event, but I can confirm that and get that with Gary. If not, we'll get in contact with your events person, so that we can make sure you're on our, on our list. We always book up Easter weekend and Halloween weekend really quick, so.
And for other events, is it just email to you to request?
Email to me or our public information, well, we don't have a public information office right now, it's vacant. Our director of communications who takes, is responsible for all the outreach events. Either way, I'll get it to her, or you can get it directly to her, and we'll, we'll fit you guys in. We have an inflatable mosquito, we have, yeah, we have a rat toss game, we'll get engaged, we'll get the kids involved, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you again for being here, and Gary has a stamp in for you.
Oh, thank you.
Very good, lovely work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Sharps who are in the house. Hilda State University of Long Beach is here, and they're going to make a presentation pertaining to the trauma and poor care guidebook for homeless service providers. Actually, I'd like to better read through it for you, because that's because I'm old.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. We're all excited to be here. We're all Cal State Long Beach Masters of Social Work, soon to be graduates next week, and we will be presenting our group thesis project. My name is Alexis, and in addition to being a graduate, graduate student, I am a lifelong Stanton resident and have been Stanton employee for over six years. These are my group members. Angela, Manuel, Joseph, and Mustafa. So today, we will briefly discuss the project we developed this year. First, we will, we will talk about the project overview, an overview of trauma and form care, the main points of the trauma and form care guidebook, and the limitations and recommendations of our project. So the project overview. The purpose of this project was to select a community and conduct a community assessment, which includes researching the community, visiting the community, and conducting interviews with community members and service providers to assess strengths and challenges. Then, based on the community assessment, we developed an intervention, which in this case, the common theme we found in interviews was homelessness in Stanton. Therefore, to better understand homelessness in Stanton, we have the honor and privilege of partnering with the homeless outreach coordinators, Diana Lachiera, Andrea Fran, former coordinator, Daniel Fonseca, and Assistant City Manager, Sue King, to support us in developing intervention regarding homelessness. We created a trauma and form care guidebook to serve as a tool to any service, homeless service provider in Stanton. For example, this can be used in the community service department. We also participated in an outreach to better understand the homeless population and to assist us with developing this guidebook. Lastly, we submitted our final draft after necessary revisions from our partners and conducted an online survey to evaluate the efficacy of the guidebook and gather suggestions for the future. We hope this tool will support outreach focused on providing services, addressing that help, and helping more individuals transition out of homelessness.
Thank you, Alexis. And so a trauma and form care perspective really is about providing those who are supporting those workers and homelessness, like building trust, building rapport, trying to understand those worksmen and homelessness, where they are, are at, and how we can support them. So it's really understanding what kind of resources they need, understanding that everybody has a different journey, you know, for those who are experienced homelessness. So the trauma and form care really is promoting the effective care. It's all really promoting safety, trust, respect, and the power of those throughout their experience of homelessness, and also giving the tools for those who are supporting those first experiences, hopefully find a way to get them to where they would like to be.
As those higher criteria of needs, we know that trigger motivation is a part of it. The first step is the two logical, such as food, shelter, and water, and the next step is security and safety. It is important to address the root of homelessness, population, which should be trauma. Untreated trauma can make it difficult for individuals to access and benefit from services aimed at their distinct homelessness. It can lead to chronic home health problems, mental health issues, substance abuse, and other outcomes. Trauma and form care is guided by five principles, safety, choice, collaboration, trustworthiness, and empowerment.
Our guidebook is mostly composed of these four sections, introduction, trauma and form perspectives, community and self-care tips. Each section has a subsection that includes different information about homelessness and trauma and form care. While we understand that we're not able to end homelessness, our hope is to provide skills based on trauma and form care, which outreach workers can apply when working with the homeless community in Stanton, in order to enhance current skills or interventions that are based on each individual's identity of trauma. There is room for continuous improvement, and we hope that our, that as the guidebook continues to be used, it will continue to be updated as necessary to fit the needs of the city and the homeless community.
Some of the limitations and recommendations, there's not a one-size-fall for everything towards the form. It doesn't fix homelessness. There's, and this, this guidebook, just to bring forward, we, our recommendations were, we expand and just, the guidebook continues meeting Stanton's particular needs. the guidebook continues meeting Stanton's particular needs. It looks as a helpful tool for anyone providing services to people experiencing homelessness. Somebody could look at this guidebook and get some understanding of meeting this guidebook instead of just, oh, there you go. And then we recommend also that future individuals working with the homeless population take less of, be aware that we won't go out there and plan. Our team will undertake you to take the homeless outreach coordinator from Longinus to do this guidebook from the bottom of our hearts and take you home. I also happen to be elected president of Stanton. I grew up in the little mansion area. And for my, I take home. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Puchamp. And Van is going to give you your stamp pins. So come on up, please. Don't be shy. A great training.
Can we ask you guys a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Do your friends and family go first?
Very good. Thank you so much. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, don't go away. We're going to ask you a few questions. Okay, go ahead, Gary. Thank you so much. While you were doing, putting the book together and everything and working with our people, were you able to contact and maybe work a little bit to see if our quality homeless? And so what did you think?
Yeah, we worked with Dania Fonseca, and we went to view the area where there were people. And what we really understood from them that they needed were more of resources. And top of that was how people approached to understand what kind of resources they needed. They needed people to understand, you know, that one person living on the streets is not the same as the other. And so it was really more of being treated as a human being, being recognized that they are still part of the community, you know, even though they're in an unfortunate state. And so it was really more just having people understand that they're human and that they deserve to be approached. Thank you.
So how many hours of fieldwork were you going to do on the streets of Stanton?
Well, actually, this was a project that took like a whole year. So it was a combination of research, visiting the community. It took about two semesters to complete, along with the research and the interviews. So we don't have the exact team number.
That's okay. And in your opinion, is this via Stanton implementing these techniques that you're suggesting? Do you see us using trauma-informed care in our outreach?
Yeah, definitely. It starts with the first, hi, how are you doing? And we definitely saw that in the outreach. So it's just supporting the current approach that there is right now.
So additionally, one thing I hear a lot when I speak to folks who work with people experiencing homelessness is that they're very service resistant. In your research, have you found a way to encourage them to accept services? And using that trauma-informed care approach, how do we get, you know, from 99-plus percent resistance to, you know, a lot less than that, what you suggest?
Yeah, that's a very difficult question. But every person is different. Of course, like my partner mentioned, Mustafa, the hierarchy of needs. If those basic needs are not met, it's really hard to accept services. Of course, if there's some issues and mental health concerns, it's really hard for them to accept services if those aren't met. So that's kind of what the Trauma Informed Care Guidebook is used for, is to kind of leave them where they're at. If you don't want to accept services that day, let's try again another day. And eventually, maybe go from around.
Sure. So my understanding of that hierarchy means it's things like shelter, food, you know, security. If our homeless outreach coordinators are providing all those things and they still do not accept services, what are you suggesting? And where is it that we fail or we can do better so that we can get them to say yes? Are there certain services that you think we need to provide to get them to a yes?
I feel like maybe not everyone wants to get shelter immediately. Sometimes there's other concerns that people like to address first. And I think it's important to be okay with addressing the other things before housing, if that's the case.
So what I'm hearing is housing first is not necessarily the solution?
Not all of them.
Okay.
It's going to make it really difficult for them to accept services if the other needs are not met. But.
Another way of looking at the trauma-informed care perspective is not looking at as if they're resisting. If they're resisting, why are they resisting? Sometimes you understand that when you have a conversation with somebody, it's about taking patience, about trying to understand again where they are. Sometimes people don't want to go to a shelter because they have a view, they might be racist here, or phobia. You don't know what it is until you talk to them. Sometimes the person trying to reach out, given that support, could be male or female. Maybe that person sees you as a danger. So it's about really, again, talking to the person, understanding where they're coming from in order to give them the resource that they need. So if they're being resistant, it's more not like they don't want the help. Why are they? And it's about training people to go out there and with that, being with it to understand like, I'm here to support you, and how can I do that to you? So I feel like that's really kind of the idea that the, that Stanton is really trying to give to those who are providing the support to give a reason to.
One more question from me, and I may need Sue King to help answer this. Careport, are you aware of the new Careport laws coming that's really starting to take effect in October? No? Okay. Sue, could you help us out with that? I believe Orange County is going to be one of the areas where they're going to start, I don't know, pilot program? I was going to say experimenting with the pilot program?
Yes. So the county of Orange is one of the seven, I believe, counties in the state that is in the fall. They're preparing, but there's some redundancy in the Careport because there are aspects of the Careport that's already been in existence. So what they're trying to do is meet the criteria, at least, of Careport. And they have limited months. And I think it's for a year for the pilot phase.
That's great. I'm hoping for that. I think really opposite of that.
There's also implications too for Careport eligibility. The diagnosis is pretty severe.
But it does deal with mental health issues, which is something that's hard sometimes for us to do just as a city. I'm looking forward to it as a start. I think it might be a great start for us.
Something.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank your group for not only looking at the data, but also going on the side of the field as well. I think that your perspective is honestly about new to our city. So I thank you guys for us for doing this project.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys can sit down. I have a couple of comments, so just relax. Make yourselves comfortable. I just want to make you aware of a couple of things in your report. One of the things that's nice about our community is that our outreach people work directly with the city. Where other cities sometimes contract out the people that work within our communities. We find in the city of Stanton, because our outreach people are actually our people, our success rate is much higher compared to other cities. Not so much in getting people to go into the shelters, but in the way in which we're able to provide alternative services for them. I think that you have to look at it in that light in your report, that Stanton is a little different than some of the other cities in Orange County. I would also suggest that since you spent such a great deal of time and energy in putting this together, then you take the basic components of it and you share it with other agencies and other cities. So often, these studies get done and they just put them on a shelf. I think it's important that you take your work and put it in a condensed form that is applicable to everyone. And after you condense it, kind of kick it around, take out some of the stuff that may be related over to our community, and then share it with everyone else. It's a very tough task. We've been at it for a long time. As you probably know, we're the first city to have room key. Nobody else wanted to do that. We're the first city to accept the elimination plan, they said. We're the first city to have three home key projects. We're the first city that's looking into supportive housing on a massive scale. And we also were the first city to come out with the navigation centers working with our local cities. We've done a very good job here. However, we have a lot of work left to do. So the things that you've done will help us implement what we need that may be new. I think that we can be helped from other agencies, such as the state. As you stated in your report, mental health is a big issue. Care and health issues are a big issue. And one of the things that you didn't touch on, which I'll be quite frank with you, is the criminal element that also not only existed normally in our city, but also could become in other populations that are in our community. I think the fact that you admitted the same problem we have, we're getting a 90% turn-down rate. There's got to be some kind of a switch that we can turn on to help those people, whatever they need, whether it's discomfort with where we might be able to help them, who helps them, how they're helped, and how we go about it. So again, on behalf of all of us in our community, we want to thank you for your time and effort. We hope that what you have done will be valuable to anyone that you give it to. And we respect your work and we thank you. Okay, one more report, we can go home. Okay, now we're going to hear from a presentation from Cal Optima Health. They're going to share their vision with the city council by providing information on current operations. Come on down. If you're good to get a stamp and sort of.
I can eat the Easter bun. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Hunt. I'm the CEO of Cal Optima Health. So I want to thank Mayor Schaubert and the town van, city council members, city manager, and certainly law enforcement and fire authority. Thank you for the great work that you do. I want to talk a little bit about Cal Optima Health and the work that we do. We are the Medi-Cal Health Plan here in Orange County. So we provide the health insurance for the members of the county that are able to qualify through the state. We have a $4 billion budget. 90% of our budget is state tax dollars. 10% is through the Medicare program. We do not receive any funds from the county. A lot of folks think that Cal Optima Health is part of the county, but actually, we're a separate public agency. And we were founded back in 1994 for what's what called a county organized health system. So back in 94, back in those days, the county made the decision not to have public hospitals. Instead, they decided to create a network of contracts across the county of various providers, including doctors, specialists, hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, and other. And we provide all the services through those contracts. We have over 10,000 contracts across the county. So we're a separate public agency. We have a fiduciary board of nine members, and they approve our budget and policies. To give you a perspective, here in the county, about 3.1 million residents, we insure a third of the county, 980,000 individuals. We have about 38,000 folks here in the city of Stanton. We insure 40% of the city. What that means is that an individual would qualify for Medi-Cal. So if you qualify for the Medi-Cal health insurance, if you're a family of four, you make less than $38,000 a year. If you're an individual, you make less than $18,000 a year. So you live below the federal poverty level. So in the county of Orange as a whole, to say a third of the population is living below the federal poverty level is really not a good thing. And we don't believe it's good that we have to insure 980,000 folks because that means folks are really struggling. Some of the new initiatives that we're undertaking is street medicine, which includes a trauma-informed approach, which you just heard about. And that is going to individuals where they are. So we take a canvassing approach to street medicine. We launched it in Garden Grove April 1st. We've seen about 100 individuals. And our success rate of enrolling them in what's called enhanced case management, about 34 so far out of the 100. That's a good number. And it all starts with that trauma-informed trust. You've got to get to know them where they are. We convinced a gentleman living under the 22 freeway in a tent to finally go to a skilled nursing facility where he really belonged, given his health conditions. There was a program here in the state last January that was launched by the state. It was funded by state tax dollars called Cal AIM, Advancing Innovations in Medi-Cal. And they have 14 community support programs that are listed. They are not going to read through those. Our health plan has implemented all 14. Out of the 105 health plans throughout the state of California, there's only 18 of us that have implemented all of it. And it's really targeting the populations that live below the federal poverty level, need the services that we provide, and is complimentary, inclusive of street medicine and recuperative care. We now have a van out on the street in Garden Grove with a doctor. It's primary care on the street, social worker, and case manager. And then we coordinate with BE WELL, which is the behavioral health mobile group. We also work with EMS and the fire authority in case there's a medical emergency. But it's really meant to put urgent care on the street. And we take a canvassing approach. So we go and find them. We ask law enforcement to alert us. Or we get calls from other individuals that say, hey, I think there's somebody that you should see. And we try to provide these surrounding supportive services. What's coming next, and one of the reasons we were asked to come tonight to talk a little bit about predetermination, or what's called renew. During the public health emergency for the last three years, the state of California suspended validating whether or not you still qualify for Medi-Cal. If you qualify for Medi-Cal health insurance in the state, there is no premium, there is no copay. All your care is provided for you. And here in Orange County, we provide that through our network of providers. During the pandemic, they didn't want individuals to lose their insurance, not be able to get medical care during the medical issues related to COVID-19. And so they stopped doing any renewals. They just started last week. It'll take about 12 months for them to go through the entire population that has Medi-Cal. There are about 14 million individuals across the state of California that have Medi-Cal. About a million here in Orange County. And over the next 12 to 14 months, individuals will get notices to renew, or they'll be informed that they have been renewed automatically for their Medi-Cal coverage. What's interesting, we're the health plan. We issue your insurance card. We provide the network of providers. We have the contracts with the medical groups. We contract with the hospitals and the skilled facilities. But the county of Orange Social Service Agency fills out the application so that the state can approve whether or not you're eligible. so that the state can approve whether or not you're eligible for the Medi-Cal health insurance, principally based on income. During this renewal process, a lot of folks have been moving around during the pandemic. Some folks didn't update their address, their phone number, their email. And so the first thing we're trying to get the message out about across all cities, if you're a Medi-Cal, CalOptima Health member, make sure your current address and phone number is up to date. We get about 70,000 phone calls a month. The Social Service Agency gets about 70,000 phone calls a month. And they have about 10,000 walk-in individuals on a monthly basis. And so we're asking folks to make sure that they either update us or the Social Service Agency. And then we share that database to make sure that everybody's information is up to date. At the same time, what's going on is the state is implementing a new software. And it's the same software that they do the eligibility enrollment in. And so there's a new website that individuals will need to go to called benefitscal.com. The old account they had previously has sunsetted. It's no longer going to be there. So if they try to log on, they aren't going to find anything. And when the state converted from one database to another, they didn't recreate the accounts in the new database. So you have to recreate your account again. And we're trying to get the word out about that. So at benefitscal.com, you can go, put in your information, put in your insurance card number, and then you will match into the system and have a new account that you can log into.
Is there a deadline on that?
It will come through the mail. And individuals will be told, as shown on this slide, you're going to get one of two letters. One letter will say, the social services folks will need your information to renew your Medi-Cal. Or you've been automatically renewed. So the Social Service Agency will send out a letter, but it's going to go to the address we have on file. If that address isn't up to date, you may not get it. So that's why we are really pushing hard to get the word out. We're talking in cities, we're doing editorials, we're doing op-ed pieces, we're doing multilingual, English, Spanish, Vietnamese, the seven primary languages spoken here in Orange County. So if you get a regular letter that says you've been renewed, you're good to go. Nothing else you need to do. If you want to have access to your account, you'll have to go to benefitscal and make sure you've got your new account. Otherwise, you're going to get a yellow five-by-seven envelope with eight and by 11 folded over. It's about a 20-page application. And then you have 60 days to fill that out. So you'll get one of two letters. You need to fill out the application when it arrives. That letter will come two weeks before. Or you'll get one saying you were automatically renewed. So that deadline is 60 days. And you can fill that out online, by phone, in person, or by mail. And so we have a couple of phone numbers next that'll help folks know where to go. So if you're a current CalOptima Health member, you can go to our customer service line, which is on the screen, 888-587-8088. Or the Social Service Agency, 800-281-9799. And online at benefitcal.com. So to complicate it even further, you will get this renewal information in the same month that you were originally approved when you received Medi-Cal. So if you were approved in August, your renewal will be in August. If you were approved back in February of this year, you'll have to wait all the way until February when you get your notice that it's time to renew. That's why this process will take about 14 months. So as part of the process, we're asking the various cities and key stakeholders like Stanton, we appreciate the invitation to be here, to join the campaign by just promoting it here at City Council. We have a renew proclamation that we'll share with the city, and you can choose to have a proclamation about renewal. Distribute our information throughout the city and publish our caloptima.org/renew. And you can go there and get all this information, multilingual. And you can also get press information, posters, even social media feeds that we've provided for everybody. They can brand it, you can put the city of Stanton on it. And in addition, we're also willing to come to cities and co-host with the Social Service Agency renewal events where we invite community folks in. They get to come to the park, our designated location, a church, a school, a city hall, wherever you choose to have it. And we'll host an event, generally on a Saturday. I was just at one with Supervisor Chafee at Mayfair Park in Anaheim this weekend. And so again, we are deeply appreciative for the opportunity to come and spend a little time here at the city of Stanton and open to taking any of your questions.
Did you get my son a satellite office here?
We understand that your office is just about big enough here in City Hall that we can...
Actually, we've been trying to get the county recorder, the original fellow brothers to come. So we're waiting for the first county people to work out in our area. And we would love to, maybe you consider taking a look at what we have to offer.
So from a satellite perspective, we're currently centric at our city drive offices. But we touch all parts of the county. We are going to be similar to the Social Service Agency. We're looking to acquire a very large mobile van that will be available to go out from city to city. And so that's how we're going to look to do it currently. Most everything we do with those that we serve is online and through phone. This year, we're also working on developing an app because we're finding very quickly that you'll communicate with us if it's in an app, but you won't go to a laptop computer to communicate. But I think, to your point, Mayor, I think having access to us is important. And that's why as part of this, we're willing to actually set up events in the city to be here so that we can access the residents and they can come to a place that's close to home, so to speak.
I appreciate that. It's just that sometimes it's difficult for people on the southwest side or the west side of Orange County to get those areas down. And you save a lot of gas.
No, absolutely.
Anyway, if you ever think that way, I should imagine we'd wait till this year or chain it, and then we can bring it before the council.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Great.
Firstly, you said that some people will get letters that tell them that they don't need to be renewed. They're done. And some will get letters that they do need renewed. What is the difference between who gets which letter?
So the state has a process, given the fact that never in the history of the state did they had to renew 14 million people all within a 12-month period, all at one time. So one of the things the state is using is other state databases of what they call ex parte information that allows them to take recently loaded data, particularly around income. So if someone has signed up for CalFresh, which is the food benefit program, and we have an application on file at the Social Service Agency at the county that's been loaded into the state system. That's the same system that they do eligibility for Medi-Cal, at least as part of that program structure. Then they can pull that data, cross-reference it, and say, oh, we just got their update on the income. They're good to go. They still qualify based on that income level. So that's why some folks will be automatically renewed ex parte, whereas others will have to fill out the application because they don't have any current information that the database is able to capture throughout the state databases. There are others that have involvement with EDD for unemployment. So again, there are other databases that they can cross-reference at the state level. That's why the state is the one that approves you for Medi-Cal or not. It's not the health plan. It has to do with the way it was legally set up to be a benefit for someone.
And then additionally, if you were to host an event in our city, what would residents need to bring to do the renewal?
So typically, we do it with the Social Service Agency. They have a very large motorhome. They have up to 20 computers, multilingual, so we can do all the primary languages. And what they need to bring most of all is their proof of income. And they can go online and look up what other paperwork they can bring with them. Current documents, of course, ID. And if they already have a Medi-Cal, CalOptima Health card, we would want them to bring their insurance card with them as well. And then for those that don't even know if they qualify or not, they never have signed up or understood that they could sign up, all they have to do is bring themselves, and then the sign-up individual will help them in whatever language they speak to identify what they need to do. And then they can follow up with them, either by phone, by mail, or online.
That's great. And then if the resident gets the yellow envelope, and they have 60 days to fill it out, but they happen to be not home or whatever, and they missed that deadline, what happens?
So the county has indicated through the state that there will be a certain amount of grace. And they're going to make that determination on a case-to-case basis. If it's through no fault of their own, my understanding is they're certainly going to make accommodation. But at some point, the individual will have to complete it in order to remain eligible for it and provide the information. But there will be grace allowed.
And then are those yellow cards in different languages to target those who may not speak English?
Yes, when the yellow envelope comes out, their language preference, our preference languages are already in their profile. That's why we need everybody to make sure it's updated. And again, we provide that in this PowerPoint, which is part of the record. And so they can go and look on that new benefitscal website and make sure that they indicate it clearly. When people call into our call center or the Social Service, we already know for the most part who they are. We update their address, their phone number, their email, and their language preference. And of course, we have multilingual staff answering phones every single day, as does the Social Service Agency.
So just to recap, what I'm hearing is people can proactively go to benefitscal.com and renew or see what they need to renew, or they can wait for that yellow envelope to come home. And if they don't proactively do it, that envelope will come home if they need to renew around the same month that they're going to finish.
Yes, and so when they go to the benefitscal.com and they reactivate their account, it will then identify what month they were originally approved. And then they can know, okay, I will wait until October because I know I'll get a letter within two weeks of my renewal. And then once I get the official yellow envelope packet from Social Service Agency, I have 60 days to complete it. And for a lot of folks, this is extremely complex. These are not intuitive forms to fill out. And so we are going to do everything we can to have live individuals available to help, community events to reach out, coordination with the Social Service Agency, and ongoing reminders and talks like these.
I guess I might question, do they have to wait for the yellow envelope indicating they need to renew? Do they need to renew, or do they do it proactively?
No, they have to wait until their renewal turn comes up. And so it goes back to the original date, which is the complicator. We're telling people to renew, and they're like, where do I renew? I'll do it right now. And it's like, well, you can't until it's the month in which you were originally approved. And that's why the notices are being sent out in that sequence over a 12 to 14-month period.
That also makes it complicated because if you have renewal events and it's not their turn yet, who knows to come, you know, during that window? And is there any sort of open renewal time where anyone can renew?
So anyone can sign up at any time if they're currently not sure if they are eligible. And if they are, that can occur now. However, if they currently have Medi-Cal, CalOptima Health insurance card, they have to wait until it's their renewal month. And to find out what month that is, they have to reestablish the account on benefitscal.com, enter that information, and then it will tell them. Or they can call the Social Service Agency, or they can call us at CalOptima Health, and we will navigate them to the right folks to give them that information. And this is going on for 14 million people. My concern is there will be individuals that fall through the cracks. I have written a very detailed op-ed on this that I'm very concerned about what this means for those that don't understand, aren't paying attention, and what does this mean to our homeless population. So we are getting very, very proactive, and I'm going to talk in as many cities as will have me.
Is there any way they would consider having an open renewal period? For example, when you have your renewal event in Stanton or wherever, that anybody can come and renew if they're required to without waiting for that 60-days period?
Unfortunately, because the state is in charge, not the county, and we aren't, is the health plan. It's the state rules as to how they've decided to roll this out. And so it will be spread out over that 12-month period, mainly because the system otherwise would not have the capacity to renew 14 million people all at the same time. That is just not possible. And Orange County just started on the new software system last week. And we are the largest population county in the state to have initiated the new program. As you know, we're the sixth-largest county in the United States.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I went to Garden Grove State of the City Celebration two weeks ago. And I don't know if you attended that event, but they were thrilled about your vans and the program in Garden Grove and spent quite a bit of time talking about it to everyone. And I just wanted you to know that Garden Grove is very proud.
No, thank you. We think the street medicine program will be vital.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
We would be very interested in maybe what you can do to help us complete 126 United Global Lot Housing projects that we're almost finished with, that we need a little bit more help with. Also, we'd be looking at, we'd like to talk to you maybe about home modification. That would be number two. And number three, can you talk a little bit about both home tenancy and home modification?
So a new benefit under CalAim, Advancing Innovations in Medi-Cal, which is funded by the state, allows for a one-time opportunity to go into a home and do everything from grab bars to wheelchair ramps to safety protocols inside the home. That's a CalAim benefit. And the individual just needs to be a Medi-Cal, CalOptima Health member here in Orange County. And that is provided through our CalAim team. And it's an outreach to our customer service number, which I left here on the big screen. And so someone can reach out and ask for that benefit. And then we assign individuals to actually go to the home, and they can provide that. Also, under CalAim, we also have housing deposits. So we can do the upfront deposits for rental income and so forth, also through CalAim. And there will be another round of funding for HHIP Housing Homeless Initiative Program. We just recently distributed about $28 million in the last three months or so. There's another round coming of about $25.1 million. And so we would look forward to the city of Stanton applying for those grant funds, which are a pass-through dollar from the state through the health plan, back out into the communities. And it also includes capital now for capital projects to build out things. That wasn't allowed until CalAim was initiated in January of 2021. And the state made the decision that they want to run those dollars through the health plan. Those dollars are separate from our $4 billion annual budget.
Is there any restriction on the use of that? What's your definition, or would be your definition of homeless?
So definition of homelessness is they are unhoused. It's very simple, not complex. And it would be to benefit individuals that have Medi-Cal. And so we can have our program folks walk city staff through it, as we have, and we've made a lot of grants around that. And we would look forward here in Stanton to have that conversation.
So basically qualification is they have to be Medi-Cal. That's probably part of it.
Yes, that's primary from the state because it's dollars that are intended specifically for that population and those individuals. And what we do is if we find unhoused individuals and we know they qualify, then we get them in line to get their applications in to get approved, either on an emergency basis or on the routine basis for both Medi-Cal as well as CalFresh on the food stamp side. or on the routine basis for both Medi-Cal as well as CalFresh on the food stamp side. And we do that quite routinely. Our street medicine team is already doing that and discovering individuals that don't have CalOptima Health, but they're fully capable of receiving them.
How long does a person have to be without a domicile or they're qualified, once they become out of the home, they're able to call the wires or a statue or anything like that?
So you're asking an interesting question. So our executive director of CalAim, who's running these programs, sold her house up in the Los Angeles market, moved into an Airbnb, then had to acquire another facility, couldn't get into the house she was going to buy, had to live at a third location, and then finally get to her new home. So she was in four domiciles within six months. She would not be considered stably housed.
Do you help acquire the paid domiciles?
Say again?
Do you help, do you help acquire the domiciles?
We have now been, through the CalAim dollars, been able to invest in certain capital to help build structure. So the capital dollars, as you know, go toward brick and mortar and assets as you build. And it's also allowing us to acquire facilities. And so we are looking at acquiring previous motels and converting them into domiciles that can be used for bridge housing.
Have you ever worked with agencies like a National Corps in those types of projects?
So I would suspect some of our team have, I haven't personally, but I'm sure others on our team have.
So you either rehab or fix up existing structures or build new structures, so it's usually two choices?
So we generally buy something that's already existing, is in proper zoning, and it's convertible. Motels are very easy to acquire because they already have the infrastructure, plumbing, bathrooms, individual rooms, and the infrastructure around it versus a ground-up bill. We do, though, coordinate with the United Group for Homelessness here in Orange County. We also work closely with people like Jamboree and others, United Way. So we're involved in all of that together, and we sit at the table in a lot of that. But now through CalAim dollars are being made available through the health plans as a pass-through from the state, which include capital that can be used by cities and other community-based organizations to create capacity for the homeless.
What would they call it?
We would expect.
Well, yes, yes.
No, we appreciate it.
Anybody else? Anyway, that was a great person. Did you or did your staff there?
Sure. So my chief of staff, Veronica Carpenter, and our government affairs and federal affairs individual for Orange County, Jordan Abushaish.
You guys did such a great job tonight. They're all three of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thus ends on this special presentation, our section effort in the history of the city. Thank you for being patient out there. I will move on to the consent calendar. We have items six through F, and I'm going to pull G sixteen. Is there any requests from the public reporting the items?
Mr. Mayor, we have that.
Anybody? Anybody stand? I, as your motion, to move the dogs?
My motion?
Okay.
Please, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion that may have been taken down, accepted by Council Number Four, is Eleanor Percy, Roll Call, both, Council Agency of thirty member Four, Council Agency of thirty member Taylor?
Yes.
Council Agency of thirty member Four?
Yes.
Mayor Lutmer, I should present him. Yes, and Mayor Sherman, Charles.
Yes. Is there, can you do that by acclamation?
This one since they're fifty-eight large.
I think.
I guess with the name of reference, the book's reference is twenty-four, the, since we're going so many items at once, I will do the roll call.
That's a good job.
I need to speak, can you come speak? All right, Mr. Mayor, you have the request to pull item six G from the consent calendar, which is an award of professional service agreement to help L T D, which is a community design of the city's official logo, branding, and messaging. Your question, sir?
Great. Now, is there a representative here?
Yes, sir, we do have two representatives here from Hub.
Oh, great. Come on up.
Mayor, I would love to introduce Jennifer Gibbard and Brian Mars there with H B Limited, and happy to answer any questions on the proposal this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. All right, my first question is, is what's your timeframe and your pretty much, where do we want to end up with the end product? And how far are you going to take us? How long is it going to take, as I said before? And what are your goals?
Yes, so the goal is to develop a comprehensive brand for the city of Stanton. And of course, when we think about brands, we often think about logos, we think about taglines, and those are an essential part of what we're going to be doing. But brand is much more comprehensive than that. And that speaks to our approach to branding. So our approach takes about four, five, six months, depending on how in depth we go, how much time we need to fully flesh it out. But we start with our investigation and analysis phase, and that includes us coming here, seeing the city, experiencing the city, and talking with people. So over the next two days, we're going to have a few different workshops and sessions with the P I O committee and a public session. Because we want to hear from the people of Stanton, what the community is like, what they value about it, what they see as is important. Because at its heart, a brand is not the visual expression or the tagline per se, it's really the feeling of being here. And what we want to understand, really, really to its core, before we get started with the visual and written parts of the brand, is that feeling. What is it like to be in Stanton? Because if we have that foundation right, then the other pieces will reveal themselves to us. So that is the first part of our process. When we do all of that feedback, we like to keep it fun, we like to keep it light, we ask stupid questions so that people feel disarmed and that they can just be part of the process and whether it's engaging for them. We'll take all that information with us, we will analyze it, sift through it, and come up with a series of findings. This is what we hear is the brand foundation for Stanton. And then from there, we can start to build on top of that, understanding who your audiences are, we can lead into what your key attributes are. And that will then lead us to an iterative process of design and messaging work. So we'll start to think about what is the logo for Stanton? We'll explore a few different options here. We like to throw a wide net. So we're confident that we're seeing what all the possibilities might be. We'll do the same thing when we're thinking about the tagline. And we'll do this iteratively. So we'll have our four working group that we meet with every two weeks. We like to meet with them every two weeks for about an hour. And those meetings are important where we're asking people to make decisions, make choices, so that we can refine things over a series of three, four rounds of work. When it's appropriate, we'll take that work to our larger committee, our P I O committee, for them to get their feedback, provide that to us, make any other updates that we need to. And once we have those foundational pieces, that logo, that visual approach, and that tagline, we can then think about expanding it out. What are all the pieces and components that you will need to, in order to update your brand everywhere, from a website to the side of the city vehicle, to signage on roadways and in the space, all of those sorts of things? And then in part, to think about the signage piece, we are including a wayfinding analysis with this project. So we'll do an inventory of all the ways that you are implementing wayfinding now. We'll identify some of the gaps we might see where things aren't included. And then we'll come up with a set of designs for the wayfinding signs based on the brand that we've developed. The last piece that we're going to be doing is thinking about communication and implementation plan, so that once we're done with this brand piece, it's not like we're just handing it to you, you have to figure out what to do with it. We're going to start to map out priorities. So over the next three years, here are all the things that you're going to need to do to update and roll this brand out. And here's where we recommend you prioritize your time and your resources. And that's going to be a key piece of the final project.
Who are some of your clients, so much of what we have? Tell me about their success and what are your so most proud of?
That's a great question. So Hub has worked extensively with other communities and counties around the country. I would think in our proposal, we featured Fredericksburg, Virginia, which is a large east coast city. We worked with them and we did a series of community workshops to gain those city attributes in handle for the very flexible city logo system that not only represents the city, but also is tailored to each of the departments that were going to be adopting that logo and rolled out comprehensively across vehicles, the website, and each department, giving them a formal role within that brand and the way you represent the work that they're doing within the city at large.
Do you include a vision statement, air of motto?
We have a tagline and messaging included. So it doesn't specifically include a vision or a motto, but we are looking at different ways that you message the work that you're doing and how it resonates with the community.
I was in S K and I was branch boarder of the mayor of Los Angeles. It's very interesting because above there, they had a kind of a design logo that implemented in some of the feelings about their community. It's the first time I've ever seen one, like the jacket with signs of name. I think those types of things are very important. If we're going to design a logo, official seal, which we have, I think it's also important that it coincides or be able to go, imagine, our mission statement as a city. And then also, I think we need to take a look at how we are feeling about the model we have. I'm old enough to know the last time we did this. And we actually did a very good job, we did it in-house. But things will change. There's a lot of things that are different. So I just wanted to get your perspective on how you're doing your project. Also, we do have a couple of council members that have a background in this area that I hope you'll be able to work with, as well as our public, our business community, and some of the people that are historians of our community. Is there anyone else? Great, true.
It sounds like you're doing a small communications audit on our wayfinding signs and all that. Are you going to expand that out to the rest of our average effort so you get a feel for what's been out there in the past?
Yes. So one of the things that we love to do is to gather as much background information as possible. The team has provided us a little bit. We've been kind of driving around and interfacing with the city over yesterday and through Thursday of this week. So background information, things that have been done, things that everybody loved and would miss, we want to know, things that people are ready to be done with, we want to know. So there is a lot of that sort of top level audit, and that's what Brian was speaking to, is we really do things that the secret to Stanton listens in. That's why we're here. We want to talk to people the first time. We have no vested interest. We are just here and curious. So it gives us the opportunity to kind of surface all that's been done, audit it, kind of come back with that findings report, and make sure that we're working from a solid foundation as we go into visual design, messaging, and all that.
And one thing that we're hoping to hear from people over our workshops is, what are the most common ways that they interact with the city or that they become aware that the city is involved in a particular project or outreach? And understand what the gaps are between what people find engaging and what the city is putting out there. And one of the things that we'll be looking for in that communication strategy is, how do we fill that gap?
And in your messaging house structure, are you going to start with pillars of the city and work forward from that? How are you going to structure the messaging platform?
So we typically look at, again, starting with that audit and understanding what is working and what's not. We firmly believe in a level, a structured hierarchy when it comes to messaging, that you have to invest in your audience, give them an attract statement, engage their curiosity, and then create the connection. So our framework really relies upon that top level messaging, earning the conversation, and then diving into the details. And so everything that we do, we apply those lenses to and give you those easy talking points and allow people to engage at a rate that they're comfortable with.
And while we're diving way down into the details, will you include like keyword clubs for different areas for the city to use in their outreach?
Yeah, one thing that we do in tandem with the hierarchy that you're just talking about is applying, or at least articulate, what your tone of voice is. And I think that is something that can come from your pillars, it can come from overhearing in the community. But we want to understand, is your tone of voice really casual and friendly, or is it really formal? Or if it's not either of those two things, where is it in between? And so one thing is, we'll think about defining what that tone of voice is by saying also what it's not. So maybe you're casual, but you're not overly friendly. So again, we're trying to find just that right in-between spot. And then we'll provide examples of what that actually turns out to, so that you have maybe say like a thirty-second pitch for something that has to do with the city, and you can see how that tone of voice comes to life, and that can then become a model for how you can be engaged in the future.
I was looking at your agreement. It says not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Do you know what the check, the check and cost was in your?
I would have to look to be a hundred percent precise, but I believe it was eighty-one thousand four hundred and so was our estimate.
And who did the contract?
City staff always prepares a contract, and if it's part of the city attorney's approved template, then we don't change the language, and there are changes we run for the city attorney lines.
So Zenia, are we going to be paying as we go through different sections of their development and their program?
Exactly.
In other words, it's not one lump sum, it's just going to be as they complete certain tasks, is that the way it's structured?
Correct, sir. Yes. So we'll have a schedule of services as we move through the project. The total monthly season amount is eight-five thousand, but we'll, and we'll, you know, seek reimbursement as we go through each case.
Have you done any small cities in California?
We have, we've worked with Pleasant Hill, California, up in the Bay Area.
Which one?
Pleasant Hill.
Oh, okay. So they have all their stuff that's your stuff?
Yes, that was specifically for a tourism brand, but the process is very similar.
Okay, so how many city, city branding setting that, like those?
We've worked with Fredericksburg, and we've worked with various counties, several counties of Utah, St. Holmes County, Washington, where we're working with Skipper Gitter, Utah, Prosser, and Washington, and elsewhere.
I'm just going to move it. Thank you. Sir, second, I'll second.
On favor? Any votes?
Welcome aboard, you're in. Where are your first small city? Where are your first small cities, so make sure you do a good job.
Thank you.
We're small, good, right?
Indeed.
Okay, moving on. I just have one comment before we move on. Under six K, I would request maybe staff, if you have the opportunity to get a hold of the OC's hand, I know that they do sewer master plan projects all the time. We are one of their agency partners. And it would be good to see if there's anything we can do to help reduce our costs. I can't think of any. All right, we have ending the consent calendar, we have no public carings, we have no unfinished business. New business, fireworks education campaign. That's probably the Mr. Here.
Yes, there, nothing into Keith Gibbard?
Thank you for.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight, staff is seeking direction regarding the continuation of the annual fireworks education campaign for 2023. A little bit of background on that, for approximately the last twenty years, staff began the annual public education campaign in hopes of reducing the little fireworks activity on the Fourth of July. on the Fourth of July. The first five years of that included citywide letters mailed to each resident in both English and Spanish explaining the problem of the provision of illegal fireworks, including the issue when supplies were caught discharging illegal fireworks. The city also provided thousands of plastic bags at fireworks stands with information regarding the consequences of illegal fireworks activity, as well as posters being placed at each location. And the information was intended to discourage residents from mixing illegal fireworks with safe and sane fireworks that were sold through fireworks. We also provided free printed material to residents and business owners to display in front of their properties regarding illegal fireworks. The cost for this endeavor in the beginning ranged between $15,000 to $40,000. With a major cost for that was about $7,000 for the citywide mailings. We got to use a third party to stuff all the envelopes, the postage that was involved, all that. So due to the ultimate ineffectiveness of that and the high cost of the educational strategy, we scaled it back about 15 years ago. We limited it to mostly lawn signs, door hangers in the neighborhood experiencing most illegal firework activity. And unfortunately, this approach has also proven to be ineffective in illegal fireworks continued throughout the city. As a side note, out of 34 incorporated cities in the county of Orange, 10 of them currently allow for safe and sane fireworks sales. The violation for that, for any illegal fireworks in the county of Orange and state of Orange in this year, that's punishable by a $1,000 fine and a $1,000 administrative fine here, and fines up to $8,000 depending upon previous convictions and stuff. All right. So over the last three years, the city has spent approximately $1,750 on the educational campaign for materials that impacted neighborhoods, again, door hangers and signs. And based on the follow-up reports that we get every year from the Orange County Fire Authority and from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, as well as feedback from the community, it's been difficult to determine if any viable impact of the educational service of that any ability to reduce the use of illegal fireworks. That being said, if the city council directs staff to continue to implement the current educational strategy for 2023, the anticipated cost for the materials would be $775 this year. Funds are not currently budgeted in the 2023 operating budget for public safety, but we do appear to have some money available from staff agencies that we can slide over. That being said, this is a secular impacts under state law. So I'll throw it back to the mayor and the city council for a discussion regarding this direction staff and any questions.
Right there. Since we haven't been very successful, do you have any suggestions on something we could do that might cut down on illegal fireworks? We really get a lot of complaints at the city council level.
Right.
From them, more from the manufactured housing communities.
Right. My recommendation would be, since I work many, many fireworks special appointments on Fourth of July with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, my recommendation would be to continue to man up with the Orange County Sheriff's Department that they have additional deputies on Fourth of July for directed patrol for illegal firework discharge. And that being said, it's very difficult for the sheriff's department to catch people with illegal fireworks actually lighting them. You have to see them do that or catch them in possession of it. So, but I would increase sheriff's control on Fourth of July, as we have been doing for many years.
Would parking like sheriff's cars in the area or anything, the areas where no problems every year, key toys, is there, is there anything new we can try? We haven't been success, really very successful.
Very, Mr. Council. I, I think moving forward, I mean, if you look at specifically what we're addressing here, I think we still have an opportunity to reach the public through our different more same group P I O meetings online. And that, that's how information is communicated these days. And where this is simply the print material, which I think it's pretty safe to say we can be as effective. The individuals that are inclined to like orders are not going to be deterred by a law suit. So that's an opinion that we have in our department. But as Mr. Gilbert stated, anything from the personnel side would be appreciated. But at some point, I'm looking for a harmful way than, not to say it is what it is, but it's going to be allowed on Fourth of July and people that are upset. But I, I think we can do the best we can on the public information side, but more through modern news.
I like that idea. Does your, would your department handle that or would that be?
We would coordinate the effort with our P I O office through Miss Boba Dino Shop.
One of the things we can do is we can contact TNT and Phantom. And what we can do is we can have the information on the regulations on a door handle and have them pay for putting them out. Because they're going to put out advertisements every household and stand. But when they're putting that advertisement out, they can also put out the restrictions of their use. And I'm pretty sure that we can get them to take care of that. I think what you have to each resident is effective. Those who have destroyed toilets or mail, door hangers are very effective in our city. And that would be a good way to do it. Also, social media is a good way to do it. And also our website, we can also start a publication maybe in, I don't, writing an ad. Sometimes they have public service ads. And then, you know, just signage, I think we should continue to put signs in our parks. We have our parks, so let's make sure those signs are in our parks or any other property that the city owns. Great, Jerome.
You guys really tried hard on your signs, but nobody could read them. That you have to cut it down to under 10 words.
Right.
Just no illegal fireworks done.
Yeah.
I think that would help the effectiveness of your signs. The problem is, is however much literature you send to somebody that shoplifts about shoplifting is illegal, they don't care, like Tim said.
Yeah.
You know, the people that do illegal fireworks, they do them year-round. I mean, Easter sounded like a war zone in my neighborhood.
Right.
So you're dealing with a tough crowd. You really are.
One of the, Jerome, one of the things we can do with that literature, if you want to think about it, is the fact that it will help us divide and find out where the hotspots are in our city. Because one of the things that we were successful in is identification of hotspots. If we in that literature give an opportunity to somebody anonymous to let us know, we can add it to that list. And right now, I can tell you where the 10 spots are going to be next Fourth of July. That would be a way to help also. Go ahead.
Yeah, just cut the words down and put that there's a hefty fine in there, $1,000 fine, whatever it is, but yeah, make it, make it to where you can read it.
Just, just be clear.
Go ahead.
Oh, it's happening about the information that we're putting out, like the P I O function and emails and online, or do you still want actual signs? Because, you know, we could, one other idea that we had talked about was utilizing Rodeo 39 and their message board. Could more go that route? Or would you be wanting new signs constructed?
I think if you cut the amount of signs down, and maybe you did 100 signs, and they're placed in our quote-unquote hotspots, that would help. And then... Yeah.
We, we've done that for you.
I know.
We're not going to eliminate them. I mean, you know, some of them come from other cities, Garden Road, a lot of them, they're all over the place. But it'd be nice if there was some way we could cut it down a little bit. I think the captain's going to have a lot of, a lot of it like he did last year.
Chief Bolzer's had a very good plan last year, and, you know, we weren't able to issue some citations. Additionally, we do know where the hotspots are. That information is provided to the sheriff's department to help direct their deployment. And as previously stated, the individuals that travel to out of state or to a reservation to buy orders are, it is our opinion that they're not going to be deterred by a door hanger or...
I don't think the door hangers, but I do think maybe 100 signs just placed at the right areas. I know where the hotspots in my area are. And, but social media has been good on this. P I O's done a great job. I think more of it is good. And maybe an article in the paper day. And, you know, just as many places as we can get the word out, cheaply and effectively.
Great.
A couple of cautions.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the staff report states that we've been doing 50 signs the past few years, and seven plus hundred dollars is only a material cost. Can you talk about maybe the staff time and the staff costs to put out those signs and all that stuff?
Correct. There, there's significant staff time involved, particularly on the door hanger side, for essentially putting staff on foot. We'd probably estimate that between two full shifts of a code officer. And then the signage, we typically, we will kind of divide and section off the city and we'll, we'll spend a good four or five hours each, or two, three hours each, to be fair.
If you had to put a dollar amount on all that staff time to distribute this information, door hangers, putting up their lawn lines, and teaming them or whatever, what, what could you say on top of that 700 plus bucks?
I was, it's probably a couple thousand.
Or, or a program that is ineffective because based on the data that we've been doing for years and nothing's properly entered. And there's also the opportunity cost for those code enforcement officers out of the field if they're trying to deal with other code enforcement issues now there.
I would certainly prepare.
Yeah, exactly. That's about putting up signs.
We don't really have a lot of time when it changes. We are pretty able, maybe it's...
I mean, we, it's, we, we were instructed at the end of last Fourth of July season, if you will, that the signs that were previously cut weren't acceptable. So those have been disposed of, so we would, we would need to get signs. I, I think we could get it done. I think the purpose of this is just determining a point moving forward.
So I made a list of the various council suggestions, so why don't I read it out and then you can have the council decide. So, yeah, sure.
Okay. I think one of the things that would be most important is to get the stakeholders. Let me tell you why. Everybody in the community wants to do something that has an affirmative, you know, desire to help us. So you've got to give them some kind of way in which they can participate in making things better. So the way you do that is you put down a number or an email that they can send, probably an email message, that they can send an area in their neighborhood that's having a firework problem. They're not targeting anybody and they're not giving anybody's name. They're not going to have to go to court, but they're able to do something. And it makes them feel participatory in helping the situation. It gives them some sense of really that, you know, that they're helping us solve a problem. I think it would, it's not going to cost us a lot of money just to have that input that we can use in our database when we identify areas. The more concentrated we get this, the easier it will be for us to enforce in the future as we have in the past.
So we do have a fireworks hotline. We're working towards having that, being able to receive emails that are specifically associated with the reports of fireworks. And then additionally, I would say that we do know where the hotspots are. We conduct a thorough cleanup slash investigation typically on July 5th, and you can pretty easily determine where the most active places are related to burn marks debris, et cetera. And it's kind of, it's usually the places that you would expect.
I went to everyone last year, drove down the street, and they're pouring out the bill of duty. And they didn't care where their cars coming or not, and they just kept on pouring. It's the same, same people, year after year after year. I think we've identified, and Jim's done a great job doing that. I think if we can get more information, you know, it may be the same spots, right? But the people fall empowered by doing that. And it makes them feel like they're really helping, which they are. And it also gives them a sense of participation, which I think is important. Because you're asking them to help us with the problem. To not get them involved in that case would not be, that's a very good idea. Go ahead.
I'll go through the list. So first off, we have a request to reach out to TNT and Phantom and to piggyback on top of whatever advertisement they are already doing and asking them to include city-specific information. And that should be pursued only if there's no cost to the city and it's part of their visiting campaign. Do you want to, how do you want to do each one so I'm sure that I have a council?
Actually, it's real important. We might just say yes or no.
Okay. At cost to the city is to pursue advertisements in written publications. You said public service ads, I guess you could be local newspapers. So if you want to give us staff a dollar amount of how much you would want us to pursue and which particular newspapers you're interested in.
Let's see, we can give them free.
So only pursue them if they are...
Public service. There you go.
The next recommendation number three was to produce 100 signs, limiting no more than 10 words, including very basic messaging. And to place those, I heard two requests. One was place them in all city parks and around city public facilities. The other one was to place them in the neighborhood hotspots.
So true.
That would be at a cost of approximately, I'm assuming $1,500, and we were doing 50 for about $700. So I'm assuming you'd ask us to find that in our existing budget. If it was insufficient, which I don't think it would be, we would reduce the scope to what we can cover.
Okay, that would be a comment that they're asked at the part of the TNT people and, you know.
So would they, I...
Ask them to sponsor the printing of the signs?
Yes.
Okay. The next request at no cost to the city is to continue to pursue the productive social media campaign, continue that messaging, and additional notices.
In fact, I would back that up with paid ads behind that.
Like on...
Okay. If you don't do paid ads, you're not reaching anything except your normal audience.
That's cheaper.
That's cheaper.
The next option I heard was to coordinate with Rodeo 39 to use their electronic billboard to place information. I don't know if we could do that at a cost or if they would do that as a public service announcement, but of course, we'll try the public service announcement route first.
Oh, so super.
And the city all has worked with.
Yes.
And the final one I heard was to number one, continue the hotline that's already, that already is in existence, and then two, to try to see if we can implement an email option to that existing hotline. So can the app, the public service response app, allow fireworks reporting?
We'll work on that. I think that's, I believe it's on there, but there's a way we can highlight that during that time period, I think.
Mr. Ren, if that app had a place where they just put address, words, and current episode.
It does, that is on there. I was speaking more to highlight it, ignoring that.
I'd be happy to have public service staff. Can we have a pre-halted, example from that?
So those are all... To have, and have them create all the content and material here that they're done.
Yeah.
You know, actually, actually, actually creating an app on ESPN or Fox News and that, it's not, it's very cheap.
Not that cheap.
It's not, but it's $70.
Our, our, our city only has so many residents at that. Those I had to reach out to. So many people I don't think it's...
Well, we're a community, but everyone watches TV. My last request is if we get 3631 as a community project, we'd be thinking we'd be arresting a couple of the signs. So we can ask them.
So, so I have direction from the council to pursue a number of options that are free or no cost to the city. And then the only paid options that you would like us to pursue, we cannot get them at cost or free, is to put up signs ourselves. And we can't get those sponsored by TNT or Phantom, to pay for the Rodeo 39 and they won't sponsor that, and to pay for paid ads on social media. I, I think that the Rodeo 39 is going to cost like, the last time I asked was $2,000 for like 10 seconds, very minimal time for like, you know. So we won't pursue that. I don't think it's worth paying that much.
Well, let's see if they would want to do it.
If they could get it, $20,000 fine.
Public service a lot.
And maybe we cut it down to the designs, if that covers enough areas.
And then I still would like to get 3631 as a nonprofit to see if they would... And then I still would like to get thirty six thirty one as a nonprofit to see if they would. Thirty six thirty one is a party.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, let's reach out to them, okay.
Just so the council knows, Phantom didn't submit any nonprofits this year for fireworks.
How many?
They didn't submit any, it's just TNT this year.
Okay.
What's your deadline?
Deadline over the past.
Okay, how many we had it was?
We have two groups this year.
Three?
Two.
Are those the same groups as last year? Same groups as last year, boys and girls supporting that foundation?
Correct.
Do we ever advertise it?
We brought it up in the past at business alliance meetings, but we've got to the point now that with all the development that's gone on in the city. A tiny homes for one, Lighthouse Church was responsible for three nonprofit groups that had fireworks stands. At Lighthouse, you had Explained Ministries, you had a Mexican congregation there, Latin Church, that was three nonprofit groups. Knights of Columbus, those guys decided to step down several years ago, they got up there in age and they don't really want to do it. And then Lions Club, they stepped down years ago to do the same reasons.
Okay.
City clerk, how would you like to move on in that direction?
I have it listed, and you approved you listing that this action had reported to the commotion and second to move with those options.
I'll make a motion.
And do you have a motion by Taylor, a second by Torres, is that correct? I want to stand for the argument, we have a motion by council member Taylor, a second by council member Torres, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Okay, we're not voting. Oral Communications, at this time members of public may address the city council, the successor agency, the state housing authority. We've got any items within our subject matter jurisdiction, provided that no action may be taken upon any of the items. Were there any requests from the public?
Mayor, we have none.
Deserting from the staff.
Mayor, I believe we have none as well.
Okay. Is there anyone sitting in the audience? Okay. Close public hearing. Where are the communications now? Mayor, Chairman, Council, Agency Authority, Initiative Business. Corray, Committee Reports, Council, Agency Authority Announcements. Yes, Mr.?
I left a point apart, stayed in the city in the last week. And it's their seventieth anniversary, so I was hoping maybe Stan could send a letter of congratulations on their anniversary.
So last night, the mayor and I had the pleasure to attend the Garden Grove Unified School District's celebration event, which was lovely because it was primarily a showcase of the arts and music talent. And they are very proud of the investment that they make as a school district in those two areas. So really, you came in, there was a very short introduction, and then we got to see their middle school dance troupe perform. We got to see the orchestra perform, and then their choir, which must have pulled from schools from across the district because it was huge. And then their jazz band performed, and then the event was over. So it was a wonderful way to celebrate, and it's great that our students who attend those schools have those enrichment opportunities.
Well, thank you.
Well, the mayor and I attended the best preparations for the firefighters, and that was wonderful to see our guys out there, and it was wonderful that.
We also had an opportunity to talk to the superintendent and their finance department about feasibility of working with them on our normal part. So that was well worth the evening. They said that they're going to be working with our staff on that, so that was kind of a bonus for us being here. I did represent the city at SCA. It was a, it was a marvelous event because we had six of the minority. And it never been so great as it was that night, it was phenomenal. And I did have an opportunity though to visit everybody. So P B K said hi, TNT said hi, and all the electants asked how we were doing, and I told them, we're all doing fine. The other good news was I had a chance to talk to a good company that for no charge at all has a new program coming in to look at the environment here. And also energy, which has done some energy events, but maybe something like that. Otherwise, it was basically the same beverage, many of them already became, you know. Some of the talks were on housing, I missed all the news because I had a little bit of minded housing. We did look into things that dealt with game resources and working with employees that felt was very interesting. And they spent a little bit of time on technology technologies. I will let you know that I'm sure we all have a bridge in our, we are bearish in anybody that I know. So, congratulations, guys. Thank you. All right. Initiated arts for future. Okay. Proceed for future spaces. You know, let me go back. And it was a good time to get an update on where we are with cannabis, where we're going with cannabis, what's happening with cannabis. I personally would like to add the everything, everything about that. Something you have on the pipeline?
We can place that on a future agenda as the council may recall recently adopted an ordinance that extended the time limit for the cannabis permit holders to have their businesses up and running. So it was supposed to expire in May or be up and running, so we've sent that through November. So we are actually currently still in the process of working with each retailer to make sure that they're getting their regular requests in if they choose to do so. So I think if you gave us a little bit of time to make sure that we have the status of everybody, we'd be happy to bring back a status report in July and let you know who chose to read up, what their status is, and any additional information you're interested in.
You know, since it may, if you may, just give us a short synopsis of, you know, kind of position. You know, where my shoes going forward and where they are, that's all I would like to know.
I can send that out separately to the council since it's not a gendite, I'm not comfortable discussing it too much.
No, I don't care what you do.
Oh, happy to do so.
Yeah, I think I would, I just would like to know.
Yes.
This thing's been dragging on for a while, so if it drags, I'd like to know what.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Council initiated business. Let me start this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item twelve E, this evening we have city council initiated item, discussions regarding adding sensitivity training to the city council's training schedule. At the end of twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three, the city council meeting, council member Torres, requesting that this item be agendized for discussion. Council member Torres is requesting to discuss the feasibility of adding an additional training course for sensitivity sensitivity training to the city council standard training schedule. Council member Torres.
Thank you. So going to the leaders summit in Sacramento, I had a chance to go to a lot of great informational panels that I think could be self-employed here at the city. I have two of them. One of them was the supplementary, supplementary training that would help not only us council today, but the future council members after us. One of the first ones that I saw was wire balanced masculine empowerment leadership matters. I think it would just be cool if we have that like as part of the onboarding process or, you know, once in a term, have that supplemental training. And then the second one was city council and staff's role in workplace investigations. I think that would be really essential because it would help us understand our goal when it comes to workers' investigations. And that would allow the city to, to do these investigations a lot more efficiently.
Council member Torres, if I can just clarify your request, so are you stating that there are existing PowerPoint presentations associated? And you would like for us to disseminate and share those with council and more staff?
That would be great, yes.
I think it's a great idea, and I'll call it supportive. I will say that I, that I've been through a lot of that with the agencies that I serve on. I know some of us have, some of us haven't. I would like to say that, I would like to make it optional for some people. There's some things that, that you presented that I probably would be interested in doing, but that's a separate another training session. With that topic, after doing it numerous times, it's a whole. I'm not saying it would do me any good, but I'm pretty well, I'm pretty well acute to that department. But I think that having it available, if somebody necessitates themselves, they want to do it, or for future, I think it's good to have it in place.
Yeah, definitely, so although like you said, like, everybody might not need it here on council, but I think for the future council members, that would be amazing. Honestly, going to those meetings, if I would have, if council would have sent me there, then I would have been able to, you know, understand this information. So I think it would be beneficial for all of us to.
And you know, if you're going to do it, I think we should expand it to other missions. I think that the other missions that we have, the city should have the vehicle opportunity if they so desire. Because we know that some of them don't have the exposure that we have as far as training or actually being put in situations. So I think a lot of those maybe not, especially things like the client commission would be very good. And I don't think you would hurt our other reservations to have that if they were certain design. So I would like to expand it some of these other rooms.
That would be great. I, one is to be required, it is because not everybody knows the information, and we can't really like pick apart every single individual. That doesn't like already knows that information or not, so that's why I think of a sense of, you know, required for everybody would be great.
I just want to clarify for staff, the, the information is in a PowerPoint presentation. There's no formal in-class training or online training. We would disseminate the presentation with slides and then state that the email depending on the council's direction, whether this was optional or mandatory for review, each individual who received it would do it on their own timeline and into their schedule.
So I'd appreciate it if like, let's say like on a onboarding process for council, you could also go through the PowerPoint as well, how we.
Review council members who have time.
You know what this might lead into that could be pretty interesting is developing a library of PowerPoints and other information for council members, committee members, commission members. And that way, if you see somebody having trouble, ah, PowerPoint number three fifty nine would be perfect for you, you know? And we could do it on a Google Drive, I mean, you know, it'd be pretty cute.
Let me, let me expand on that, that might be right. I think that's a good point, Joe, and how about this? You know, I'm not going to be on the OCFA forever, I'm not going to be our OC Santa forever, I'm not going to be doing the rewards. I mean, that's going to involve a new number of people. And I think that also we should have information based on other places. I don't know that much about Megford because, you know, Al dominated that, and now you dominate this. But I think it's good that we understand what our role would be if we serve on those other agencies. So, Joe, that's a great idea to have that type of file, so people can find out about other things that they train.
That would be good. I'm sure all of us run into materials that, you know, this would be great for council, and then we don't do anything with it, so.
And then that way we can incorporate it in the council training by staff, and then also we can use it like, I'm sure that when I go, somebody who takes over the fire, we might have to know a little bit about the history on behalf of the teacher. That way you're passing on institutional knowledge. And I think that passing on institutional knowledge is just a great thing.
I want to mention, I actually attended that training on live balance evidence and masculine empowerment matters. And the PowerPoint itself is not that helpful, it was the exercises that you do during that session that helped. And they would make us move across the rooms, talk to each other, and actually act out certain scenes. And so if you were to just go through the PowerPoint, it doesn't really mean anything because you need that facility to go through that class. So I'm, I'm not sure if, you know, emailing out PowerPoint will help. I wonder if there's anyone who can reach out to Cal Cities and say, is there like a video recording? Or something like that, that to supplement that PowerPoint, because otherwise it's pretty meaningless. Although I do regret not being able to do that city council and staff workplace investigation. I think we split up the sessions, so that would be two different ones, and I, I hope that I do have access to those PowerPoint and that training, thank you.
But in fact, a lot of the, that we give, we work with a lot of our HR departments, you know, as far as we're able to, we have, I have watched those. I think that they do put situations like that on the video. And I think if we looked research in that area, they can also put in sort of scenarios that would match that. So I think we could expand on the one that you saw, add those things to a video, they can give some actual practical examples. And that would, and that would make it a lot easier. Our time is so difficult for us to order together. I think that I like the idea that still you have, when we have the opportunity, but I think we can make it a better presentation of what he described.
All right. I thought you had the training. But we just have some of that here.
I know, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to say, a lot of what we get trained in have those types of scenarios. And I think it's important that if we're going to do it, that we have something to supplement what he's providing, that's, I'm sure it's out there.
I only suggest we, why don't we just go to the speed pack?
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, Donald, if you're okay, we'll go ahead and support it, and then let the staff kind of put it together working with you. And then you bring it back to us and see what we end up.
All in favor?
Hi.
With four out of five, we do receive. So we will be, we'll borrow with research.
Okay, you still, you still get there, right?
Yes. Item twelve E, city council initiated item, discussion regarding updating creating rules and regulations pertaining to payday lender businesses within the city. Again, at the end of twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three, city council meeting, council member Torres, requesting that this item be agendized for discussion. Council member Torres is requesting to discuss the feasibility of updating or creating rules and regulations pertaining to payday lender businesses within the city to include items such as imposed operating hours restricted hours restricted, implement distancing requirements, and implement limitations on the number of permitted payday lender businesses within the city. How from your?
Thank you. So upon driving around our city, I noticed an issue that seems to be for payday. We have around five payday loan businesses operating in our city. In some court, in some intersections in our city, we have payday loans, that's under the quarter. And it seems like they're very concentrated in our three point one, you know, square city miles. It's not, that's, it's a lot for such a small city. So I, I moved to implement some ordinances surrounding zoning for payday loans. So just a little background on payday loans. The city right now, I mean, obviously the state already caps interest rates at thirty five percent, but that does not apply to smaller, to smaller loans with smaller timeframes. So sometimes people take out loans, max is three hundred dollars, so it's not as much as they're, they're not borrowing as much as people would think. But three hundred dollars can make or break rent a lot of times. So that being said, against California's laws, doesn't apply to a small timeframe, timeframe for these loans. The APY turns out to be four hundred and sixty percent. And I think that's very predatory, it could, you know, make our, our population poorer. And as we know, wealth and equality more than poverty creates crime. If you are in debt, you are poor, you are on the streets, everything around you will look, you know, nicely wrapped and hope. Ready for somebody to, I guess, break in or take something. So I think that as part of making sure that our economy here is more of a spending economy, not a dead economy, we should implement these ordinances. So one of the first things I wanted to implement is the operating hours from seven A M. to seven P M. Just to keep in mind that these would be brand colored in, so it wouldn't apply to the existing payday loans, payday loan businesses. So operating hours from seven A M. to seven P M., I looked up the payday loan bill of businesses that, that opened in our city, and they follow a similar timeframe. So they're already adhering somewhat to these, to, to. Also distancing requirements, thousand feet in between would be amazing because, like I said, there are some intersections where there are two, two on either side. And then the last one would be, um, how many are permitted to operate? Um, I would like to count that at three. Um, if any of these payday loans would develop business, um, and try to come back in, if they were not able to, you could just think of three.
H D, uh, if we put a moratorium, um, on this, um, that would prevent any future ones coming in. The problem is, is if we have, um, those that are already licensed, um, is it, is it rather difficult to change the terms agreements of, uh, all the existing businesses?
Mayor Council, um, if there's an existing business, you know, the city could change its regulations and those businesses would become non-conforming users. And so typically they would be allowed to operate by if they had it. If they shut down or whatnot, they couldn't be able to come back on one day, be subject to those regulations. Um, so there's a difference between kind of the zoning. We can cer- certainly impose more regulations on them in terms of how they operate or, you know, have clear windows. That, that would be a regulation that can be easily imposed in a straight way. But in terms of, you know, nearing and, and for them to shut down, the city would have to give businesses amounts of time to what we, what we would call amortize and to allow them to kind of get the benefit of their investment before, you know, those regulations kind of churn them out.
I think my behoove is to, uh, look at a feasible moratorium. If that would be something. I don't see a lot of them popping up. Uh, if the economy goes bad, you could have a lot more, you have a couple. So I think it would be good to have that available. Um, I think the cost of litigation for those that we try to close down would be pretty expensive.
So all these ordinances would be grandpaled in. So none of these existing businesses would be mentioned.
And they would, they still have options, which is important. I'm not talking about closing down, not adhering to the new, new requirements right out.
Um, if we propose that cap in our business free, that means that the, with the five existing businesses, no new business. So at least three of them shut down, is that right? Um, and whereas a moratorium, if there's a timeline, it doesn't actually become that whole ordinance that's in the books. It's, um, basically rubbery, does that go?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. So as I understand it, if, if there was just a cap on it, exactly what you said, uh, where, whereas they shut down by whatever means, one could not come in unless there was a spike of the temporary. A moratorium may would depend on how the city would want to structure it to clean moratoriums. Last up, up until about two years. So that's a temporary fix. But yes, the, the ordinance would be implemented.
But your, one of the basics, a regulation.
Um, in our initial research, and again, you know, our office is looking for council direction. In our initial research, we found that generally the state already, uh, imposes regulations regarding fees and the structure of the loan. So kind of getting at how, you know, the actual business, uh, how big the loan and how much, how much the interest rate. Cities are likely preempted by state regulations. But where the city has, you know, uh, authority is under the California Constitution of Police Power, right? To regulate land use. That's, that is in those kind of zoning issues are within the city's.
So limiting the three is, is the, uh, problem?
That would be under the city's police power for many use.
So we tried to have, uh, all of these and that it would affect any future right coming in. I mean, I think the problem, my other question would be temporary law enforcement.
In, uh, enforcement in what context? Just the numbers of establishments?
Operation hours, uh, we have things up there.
That's something we could take a look at. Um, as councilman Torres mentioned, the current, uh, operating hours of those establishments are consistent with what he mentioned. They're, they're not opening.
So we really don't have any, any close issues on that?
No, we, the, obviously the, any issues associated with the, typically any issues associated with payday loans, in my experience, have been more on the criminal side to me than they were brought, et cetera.
So probably the only thing would be is if we did pass this and we had five and then all of a sudden six more comes along, then that would be something that would fall, they're per viewed, right?
But then prior to that, they would be subject to the zoning distancing. As far as six versus five from our standpoint, from monitoring the businesses.
I'm just talking about this, I'll be open to that.
Correct. Yeah, that, that's something that we would address as far through the business license process, et cetera.
Thank you.
Um, I just know that a lot of the Hispanic guys that have worked with us over the years, they use those payday loans to wire money back to Mexico. I mean, I've gone into there to pay a, um, utility bill in the past. I mean, they're used for a lot of things besides just checks. And they do service to community. That's why we have several of them. And I think we have more than five. There's one inside a food stall. There's one going out of business at Home Depot. Um, but these are viable businesses and the reason we have a lot of them is because our citizens use them. So I don't know if we should start clamping down on these. Yes, they're not, you know, for Goodman or anything like that, but they are, they are essential to our community. And especially our lower incomes that don't have bank accounts, that can't wire money, you know? And sometimes, yeah, you just have to bite the bullet, take a loan and you know it's going to be high interest. But if we've looked at our credit cards lately, they're not effectively cheap either. So, I mean, I don't know. To me, I would touch it. I think they're doing fine. If somebody is abusive with their friends, yeah. But I mean, other than that, I think they're a valid business for this community.
Um, so just to, uh, kind of touch on what you said, um, if somebody needs to send three hundred dollars to somewhere like Central America, Mexico, um, they would be taking a large, um, a large position, right? But also since these rates are four hundred and sixty percent, we guarantee that people might go into bankruptcy a lot more than they would have taken those loans. So, um, I know that, uh, payday loans, um, tend to flourish more in areas of low-income communities because the rate is three hundred dollars, right? It's not even more than that. So, um, I think that, um, just taking the loan itself could, um, you know, just lead you down the path of bankruptcy. You know, it would be even harder to get our citizens of homelessness there as well. But that's kind of big brotherish.
The, um, the guys that I.
No, I mean, so, so, I mean, because our offices, they could still.
I, I, I do want to mention that we already have in our books distance requirements for smoke shops, for cannabis, for massage, you know, we do it for a lot of industries. So I, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't want to say that this is big brother because we do it all the time as a city. And it's, we can choose which industries we find undesirable or want on the list.
But I'm not sure, I, I, I mean, I'm not sure they're undesirable. I mean, not everybody borrows money from Central America or something. Some people will come in with money and just say, it's not, I'm not sure if like they use it as that as borrowing money. I have some people, and some people have those three hundred dollars in order to, uh, pay that, you know what I mean?
No, I understand that.
I mean, maybe they really need it. Um, you know, some people.
I think, yeah, I think, I think they want to do the number, but I think we need to be kind of careful on.
I like, like Carol said, I think they do certain, uh, purposes. I actually have used one, but I mean, I think maybe you're killing pillow times and things like that. That seems like very much why. So, uh, just to throw out some of my, um, experiences that I've heard from people in our city. Um, somebody's got like a two hundred dollar loan and in two months they paid it off and it amounts to like seven hundred, eight hundred dollars. So, um, it is definitely a, uh, not, it's a big decision to make.
There's a couple of things I can comment on this. The first is, the reality is if we limit this, the ones that are existing, um, will probably be more business, right? They'll, their, their existing hours, whatever it may be, outside of our recommended hours, will stay. And the folks who aren't new will be limited. Um, and so, and then if we do reduce it because someone could be going behind this or whatever, um, if folks need that service, they will just have to go further to get that service and then go to a nearby city or something else. Um, and so the, the real issue is there's a need in the community. Maybe it's a need for cash or a need for whatever, and these payday loans are meeting that need. And the question is, do we want to, um, make it more difficult for folks to have that need met? Because we, you know, like council member Torres told me, is that they're predatory or they're going to hurt them in the long run because of more debt or need to homelessness or whatever. Um, but it doesn't actually address the underlying issue, which is people have that need. You have to be pretty desperate to kick off that loan at such high, um, interest rates. And, uh, perhaps a more effective way to look at addressing the problem is to, I don't know if it's all possible. And I spoke briefly to our city attorney about this in the phone, um, to address the actual poverty. And I don't know if that's working with a nonprofit in our city to, you know, stand in front of a payday loan and survey codes. Why do, why are you using these services? Do you know that our city has, you know, free diapers? There's a rental assistance program. If you have problems with your, uh, utility bill, this is, this is a resource that are, that, you know, someone can provide. Um, and maybe that's, that's a better way of getting at the poverty issue that's creating that need for payday loans. And that prevents them from needing that one in the first place. Maybe that's a more effective way to, um, address the issue of, or something.
Um, so economically, um, people will take out these loans as frequent if we have those needs met as you're talking about. And maybe this could be an alternative, uh, things like maybe promoting other types of loans that are less, um, are like four sixty percent, right? And also, um, just providing new jobs, like we have in the city, right? Um, if you have a big job, I'm hoping to get those ones. So, um, I'm really grateful to the city that they're helping a lot of businesses. Because that's something that does tackle that, that I need that.
Here, here, we see the name points. Everybody see the name points. This book. Jim, have we had?
From an operational standpoint, I've never had an issue at any location.
Have we? I know that we have a lot we do on the corner.
On my end, as far as, uh, just kind of bad business operations, loitering, et cetera. They usually do a big job around the own shop. However, it, I mean, it is, it is a target, obviously, just the nature of what we do.
It seems like discussion has come to an end. Is there a motion to support council or is it a request? I'll, I'll make that motion. Yes, you can.
Oh, one second.
On favor?
Hi.
Any votes?
No, no.
Oh.
We have three noes and two yeses. So I'm excited to be one of those to the board. If you now please proceed with the five. Mr. Mayor will be on tide in thirteen.
Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no items.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just a reminder that we're having our budget workshop next Tuesday, May sixteenth. We will be dividing a light dinner. So encourage community members and interested residents to please come on, participate. I think it's one of the most interesting and informative, um, meetings or workshops of the year. And we do anticipate for planning purposes that it would run approximately two to three hours. Hopefully, we'll see. It could go longer. It's next Tuesday, May sixteenth at five P M.
And your targets are, yes, this is your meeting, May sixteenth, and it should be on your calendar.
I learned all about helicopters today. It's very good. So that means that we are going to hear from you, right? Try to find.
Right. Good evening, honorable mayor, council members and city staff. It's my pleasure to provide a follow-up on OCFA operational, a report for the period of April, uh, the month of April twenty twenty-three. In April twenty twenty-three, the OCFA responded to a total of three hundred and thirty-five incidents within the city. Um, of those incidents, seventeen were reported as fires, three hundred and two were EMS or rescue related, and sixteen were reported as a hazardous condition or service calls. Additionally, the OCFA responded to sixty incidents within the unincorporated area of Orange County Service Fire Station Forty-Six. Of those sixty calls, all sixty were EMS or rescue related. During the month of April, there were three notable incidents that took place within the city. Um, the first one occurred on, uh, April the tenth. There was a reported, uh, storm drain fire at fourteen forty-one hours, um, at the intersection of Dale and, uh, Sandestrel and the city of St. Uh, crews arrived on scene with smoke showing from the storm drains. And upon further investigation, they found a, you know, box spring mattress and a lot of debris behind a storm drain there and extinguished the fire. Um, upon extinguishing the fire, uh, nobody, there was no civilians, fire, further injuries, but it was determined to be related to the transient population, unknown if it was an accidental fire caused by a cooking or warming fire or if it was arson related. The second incident happened, um, five days later on April fifteenth, fifteen thirteen. Uh, OCFA dispatch center received, uh, multiple calls for an active shooter incident at the Harry Getz and Park, uh, Dots and Parks, excuse me. Uh, Orange County Sheriff's officers, uh, arrived on scene shortly after the initial report and downgraded the call to just a shooting, not an active shooter incident going on within the city. Uh, once the, uh, sheriff's department cleared the scene, firefighters arrived and, uh, found two victims suffering from multiple gunshot wounds. Uh, one of those victims was in traumatic co-arrest when they arrived on scene. Uh, both patients were transported, three transported to ECI, uh, but unfortunately one victim succumbed to those injuries of the gunshot. And the third notable incident is, uh, occurred on April seventeenth, um, around seventeen, um, around five fifty-four in the afternoon, uh, dispatch center received, uh, calls for a truck fire located in the, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred block of Court Street in the city of St. Uh, firefighters arrived on scene, found a passenger van in the parking lot, a fully blown fire. Uh, upon extinguishing the fire and searching the interior of the van, um, they did find one occupant, uh, was found deceased in the vehicle. Um, due to the, uh, nature of finding a deceased person in the vehicles and the common thing we run across of them, maybe in the T C, um, our arson investigators and Orange County sheriffs were called out to do a full investigation. Uh, they screened, screens, excuse me, screened the area for video cameras, so we didn't split the statements and determined the cause of the fire was an accident, accidental in nature and did cause, uh, did start from the interior of the van. Um, but obviously with, due to the contents and the damage, they couldn't rule out the exact cause of that fire. During the month of April, um, our safety messages were focused on the ABCs of water, uh, safety, which is adult supervision barriers in classes. Uh, drownings are the leading cause of death in children aged five. And approximately six percent of all, uh, drowning incidents take place in either a backyard or community pool. Uh, we'll be continuing on the specing through the month, all the way through August with our water safety campaigns. Additionally, we focused on, uh, barbecue safety and then, uh, home assessment and safety tips for the safety, general safetyness around the house. Um, or additionally, additionally, we're posting a social media post on our Ready Set Go program um, to help prepare your home, protect your family in that wildfire. Not specific to the area of St. But if we do have communities that do live within that wildland, they're face areas. Um, as a reminder, you can visit our website at W W W dot O C F A dot org for reference of all of our safety flyers that are printed in multiple languages and those are available to be posted, um, in many city newsletters or city publications as well. And then for upcoming, uh, we're looking forward to the, uh, participating in the upcoming twentieth annual car show, uh, scheduled for Saturday, May twenty, and then as well on May twenty-third, our, uh, educator, Milton Neer will be, uh, conducting a disaster emergency preparedness presentation at the Plaza Plains Mobile Homes in the community. Looking forward to that partnership as well. Uh, this concludes my report for the month of April. I'm open to any questions if you have any. Yes, sir.
I may notice that we have eighty-five, uh, twenty-eighty-five responding to two railroad trucks yesterday. What was that?
I'm not positive about that. So I'll look at a call to street. I can get back to you on that. So was the, they responded to where exactly?
Cattle Road Trucks.
Okay. And you know approximately the time of day?
It was in the afternoon.
Okay. I'll look that up and I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I did, I did want to let you know that, um, at the OCFA, they brought up, where a great job our folks did on the three, three oh one on the apartment complex in Long Island. So that was really good, too. Um, I was also interested on. I was also interested on how they were handling the, on smoking injectors, what we're going to be doing on the waste management. They came up with the idea that if it's a resident, they're, they're able to take the smoking injectors that have the radioactive material and they would be processed into the landfill. But all commercial are going to have to be taken care of in a different manner. As you know, those particular smoke detectors have a radioactive material. So it was much more attention where we could put all these in the landfill. But I think we'll be able to. Anyway, anything else?
Uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Did you, I'm going to try to break the video on helicopters. I think it'll be very interesting, although we don't get to use it much here. I think you'll see how, how we're able to get a couple of those. So all this, they're like.
One quick question. Can we keep any records on fires that start due to drug use?
Due to, um, due to drug use.
Well, I spoke to you, like a.
So we do, you know, we do, and we have our national fire incident reporting systems called N versus use nationally across the country. All of our fires that are, that do occur do have, we do perform a cause and origin investigation. And we will either come up with a determined cause or an unknown or accidental cause. So we do have reporting of that. We can go back and look at historical records and historical knowledge based on fires caused by someone specific like cigarettes or smoking or cooking or other causes of the fire.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
By the way, I did have, I attended the operations meeting that we had yesterday. And I will tell you that we do have some social medias now that I, I was chair that we got. One was human resources, we've had that, but we just instituted a legislation and operations. Also, I want to let you know that we have finalized our budget that we received. So you've got that. And as you can see, we, we do not go above and below at point five percent. So I think that's good. So you didn't take the sheriff's promise, but I do like, because I won't comment. Okay. My final thing is, great presentation to me. I'm sure the rest of us, from being finance department and your associate and working with, of course, and I think that, I've been a long time, Tomato is one of the best reports I've ever had as far as the information and how it was presented. So thank you very much for that.
It's on its head, so.
Okay. I will also recognize Crystal, today has been an excellent job in looking at the situation that she was working on solving to be able to get super on air open. I think that's going to be just awesome to do that. She really went out of her way to get that all the way. And of course, any of you guys are enjoying your job? Jim? Get up to your workout gear in the trenches and let's hit those, and let's hit those strange things, okay? Tonight, everybody.